Oh, that's a whole.
At seven o'clock, I will entertain a motion open.
Make the motion.
Second.
This is a meeting, a joint meeting of the Public School Committee, the Board of Selection, Christian Finance Committee to review the presentation of the school department budget. All in favor?
Aye.
The only order of business that we have this evening is to review the school department budget, so at this point, I will turn the meeting over to the school committee.
And I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Flynn. Okay, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We're here tonight to review our budget request for 2020. Before we get started, I'll just review what the materials you have in your packet. You have a copy of the slides, that's the staple package. You have some handouts that I may refer to throughout the night that further explain the budget. And you have our agenda for tonight. So, we'll get started, and if you want, you can ask questions at any time, or we can take questions at the end. We can, we'll do whatever you feel is you need to do. Okay. So, we started our budget process like we typically do. We began in December. Our administrators formulated their department budget, and we met as a leadership team, the superintendent, myself, the principals, our director of special education and directive technology, to discuss what our needs for next year were. I then combined all of the department budgets with salaries and district level budget items, and then we met with our budget subcommittee of the school committee in February and January to review the budget with the superintendent, business manager, and district administrators. So, our preliminary budget that the school committee voted on for FY '20 is $14,716,479. Now, that's $509,385 over last year, which represents a 3.585% increase. It maintains level services, and that most line items, as you'll see, are level funded, a lot are level funded, and two new positions, which I'll talk about in a little bit. So, the components of our budget is very similar to what you've seen in years past. Salaries take up 58% of the budget. Tuition, which includes high school and out-of-district tuition, is 26%. Student services, which includes transportation, is 8%. Instructional resources, anything to do with instructions that's not salaries, is 4%. Facilities and maintenance and custodians are 3%. And administration, the school committee budget, the central office budget, is 1%. So, this next slide is the same thing, just with the dollars, dollar amounts that it represents.
This is not a number.
So, our largest component of the budget is salaries, at $8,623,616. We have a total staff of 147.6 FTE. In the operating budget, which is what we're talking about tonight, is 132.4. The remainder of the people, 15.2, are funded through grants and funds, our special education grant, the Title I grant, a preschool revolving fund grant, and the school lunch revolving fund. So, of those salaries, district leadership and administration is $351,851. Instructional leadership is $929,123. The bulk of our salaries are classroom teachers, as you would expect, 77.5 FTE, at $5,433,479. Therapists at $268,500, so those would be your speech and occupational therapists that we employ on our payroll. Substitute teachers, all substitutes, teachers, nurses, any substitute professionals that we call in. Paraprofessionals, we have 27 for $566,400, but six of that 27 is paid for by grants and funds. 5.0 FTE guidance and adjustment counselors for $342,334. A school psychologist. We have an attendance and residency officer. Medical and health services is our school nurse. Food service, we have 6.0 FTE, but there's a zero there because, as I said, those are funded by our school lunch revolving fund. Student activity stipends, those are for any after-school activities and clubs. School security. And custodians and maintenance make up the rest of it. The second largest component of our budget is tuitions to other schools, at $3,845,67. You can see the breakdown of where our students go to our local high schools. We have 11 students projected, and this is projected for next year at Bristol-Aggie, seven students at New Bedford High School, 259 at Fairhaven High, and 21 in school choice placements. So, we tuition out, not including out-of-district special education, 298 students projected for next year. So, you can see that makes up a big portion of the tuition, $3,600,000 of the $3,845,000. The remainder is our out-of-district tuitions, collaborative, $844,000. Private placements, $43,020. We carry over circuit breaker every year, you've all probably familiar with hearing me talk about this, it's reimbursement from the state for your special education costs, and we carry it over from year to year. So, this year, we have $52,601 to carry over. And in order to balance the budget where we needed it to be, we're going, we're planning to use $50,000 from the special ed revolving fund that was voted last year at town meeting. Right now, there's $100,000 in that, and we're hoping to add to it this year, but we need to plan to use $50,000 for next year's budget. So, our total out-of-district tuition is $784,419. That represents 16 students, but I want to tell you that just this week, we became aware of two students who moved into the town of Akushnet that require out-of-district placements. So, this budget is already starting us behind, because those two tuitions, we haven't determined their placement yet, but they've proven residency, we are aware of them, and so those costs are not included in this budget. This budget is what the school committee voted on last week, and just, I believe, Tuesday, we became aware, so yesterday. So, just, you know, please know that going forward. Here's just a graph of our out-of-district special education tuition from FY '12 to FY ' '20. You can see the highest was in FY '12, went down, went up a little bit, has steadily gone down, went up a little bit last year, and it's pretty steady as to what it was last year compared to, this year compared to last year. So, overall, we're still lower than we were in 2012, but really, there's really no, you know, there's really no way to justify that, because we just, obviously, we just don't know who's moving into Akushnet, what their placements require, you know, so, or what we'll get for the reimbursements. So, it's, we're good that we've, we're lower than we have been, but it's something that's always out of our control and unpredictable.
Is that driven mostly by volume of students?
Um, it could be, or it could be the type of placement. You know, if I looked back to 2012, I know at one time, we did have a very high private placement, that was upwards of $100,000. So, it could be volume of students, all at, say, collaborative placements that are relatively less expensive, or it could be, you could have a couple of students in higher place, higher cost placements. Last year, we had 15 out-of-district students, when I looked back at what we budgeted for. This year, we're budgeting for 16, but not including those two that we just found out about yesterday.
Thank you.
Student services is our third largest component of the budget. What makes that up is the attendant, now, these are expenses, these aren't salaries. So, any of these, now, we're talking about the expense side, not the salary side. So, any expenses related to the attendance and residency office, expenses related to the nurses' office, athletics, student activities, and food service, that we don't put through school lunch revolving. And what that is, is any student who has a balance, a negative balance, at the end of the year, we do allow children to borrow for school lunch, that's snow on, melting off the roof. If they, the school lunch account cannot close in the negative at the end of the year, so we have to fund it through the general fund budget. So, we put an amount in, which is part of that $67.50 to cover any anticipated negative balances in school lunch. Student transportation is the largest component, at $1,117,103. So, to break that down for you, because that's a pretty big number, regular day transportation, that's our, the big yellow bus that you see, 629,633. At any one time between, at the elementary school, we're running 10 buses. At the Ford Middle School, we're running nine buses. We're running a few less to our high schools. So, anyone, at our highest time, we have 10 buses out on the road, and that also includes an amount for the late bus, too, at Ford Middle School. Special education transportation, this is to bring the students to their placements. Their placements may be in New Bedford, they may be here at our collaborative classrooms in Akushnet, they may be at one of the old Rochester schools, a Dartmouth school, they may be as far as Seekonk or Somerset. So, these are the private, what we call private transportation, it's the vans that you see running around during the day. These, what I can tell you with this is, we've been able to contain costs in this manner because we've pursued some cost savings and cost sharing with other districts. This year, we're sharing some routes with Fairhaven Public Schools, with Marion Public Schools, and New Bedford Public Schools, and at a time, we were sharing a route with Seekonk Public Schools. So, if we, you know, a lot of times, we'll talk with our counterparts in other towns, "Hey, do you have a kid going to this placement? Yes, I've got a van going there, you want to hop on?" And we'll share the cost of the ride. So, that's really helped us this year, because as you can see, that's pretty costly for us.
How long's the contract with the bus?
For the special education vans, it's just a yearly, we just bid it out to, we take all of our routes, bid it out to various vendors, and it's just a one year, because those routes are always changing. The regular day, the big bus contract, it's a three-year contract. So, currently, we're in year one, so next year, obviously, is year two.
Have we been with the same vendor?
We have. Typically, student transportation vendors are territorial, they'll stay, they'll not bid on others' contracts or other towns. We have a hard time sometimes attracting, all schools have a hard time attracting a lot of bidders for their contract. Last year, we actually was, we did something that not a lot of other schools have done, we got two companies to bid on our contract, which resulted, actually, last year, in a lower cost from the previous year to last year. So, by the end of our three-year contract now, we still won't be as high as we were last year. So, that really helped us when we were able to get some interest in our contract. But that's, you know, that's pretty unusual and unheard of, so we were fortunate in that. McKinney-Vento, that is the homeless transportation, so the law requires you to transport students who are considered homeless, and they can be considered homeless because they've lost their regular adequate fixed housing, they're doubling up with relatives, it may be an economic hardship, so there's a whole lot of reasons why a student might be considered homeless. But if, say, for example, an Akushnet student were to have a house fire, they were coming to school here, the house burns down, unfortunately, they move in with grandma in New Bedford, but they still want to, they're still allowed under the law to come to Akushnet, so we have to transport them from New Bedford to Akushnet, but we can share, the law allows us to share with New Bedford. So, that is another unpredictable, because we just never know who we're going to have from McKinney-Vento students from year to year.
Excuse me, Kristen, is that numbered, so do you base that on the previous year? Or how do you know, how do you adjust that?
So, for example, for next year, I looked at the students that we have this year, and they're all, unless they move or find fixed housing somewhere else or in Akushnet, they're all going to be with us next year based on their grade level. And unfortunately, we have a student at the elementary school, a student at the middle school, and a student at one of our high schools. So, we're running three, on the same family, so we're running three different vans to get those students here.
Can each student stay for years like that on this program?
Yes, until they find, until they find regular fixed housing, so they can, and it's a challenge for all public schools, it really is.
Sure must be.
It really, it really is. So, this year, we have three students, one year, we did have five, but sometimes, they're, you know, unfortunately, very transient, so sometimes, you'll just have them on your rolls for a couple months, so it's really, so the figure that I have in is based on what we thought this year, actually, you know, you'll see when I present some of the cuts we had to make, that it really should be higher, but where we're not sure, we cut it a little bit, but that's an area that we may fall short next year, but, you know, you just never know. Same thing with foster students, you have to transport foster students, and they may be living in another city or town, and the law requires them to be able to attend their school of origin or the school that's the best, in their best interest. So, the school of origin may be Akushnet, but their best interest may be where they're living someplace else. Now, unlike McKinney-Vento transportation, the law doesn't require a cost share, so it's really, it's really the burden of the school that the student is attending. And if the other town wants to be nice, they'll share, but sometimes, that doesn't always work out, so that's challenging. And we typically do have some foster students, so that's something that's in there. This year, we don't have any, but in years past, we have, and the Department of Ed has asked us to start tracking foster student transportation, so we have a line item for that now.
There's no state subsidies for that, or nothing?
No. With McKinney-Vento, they reimburse, they'll reimburse you at the end of the year, but that reimbursement is a general fund, so it's a year after, once you file your end-of-year report, they'll give a reimbursement back to the town, to the general fund.
Well, if you've got a foster kid, they've always gone to your school.
So, instructional services, that's another big part, the fourth largest component, and again, this is expenses, not salaries. So, you see, one of the bigger items is therapeutic services, so those are contracted services for special education. So, if we contract out with behavioral therapists, physical therapists, speech therapists, if it's above and beyond what we can take care of with our staff, that's what you see in that line item. Professional development includes a contracted amount for tuition reimbursement for teachers and paras, in addition to coursework that we allow through the budget for teachers and other staff in the contract, and they have to maintain their, they have to maintain their certifications and get professional development, so that's part of our budget. Textbooks, that's, you know, textbooks and supplies, you know, the typical math, English books. This figure, we have lower than what it actually needs to be, because you'll see that we have a town meeting article to update our curriculum, so we'll be talking about that later, too. Some of the other big items, general classroom supplies, that's for both buildings, for, you know, pens, pencils, paper, anything, erasers, paint, construction paper, whatever schools use in their classrooms. Instructional technology, that's all of our technology, any contract services for technology, which may include some of our hardware and software contracted services that we have. It's also computer equipment supplies, so that's a big part of that. And psychological services, that is additional psych contract services and some psych testing The fifth largest component is facilities maintenance, custodial services, custodial supplies, paper goods, things like that, $35,000. Heating of the buildings for the oil, $132,000. All other utilities are $175,000, and maintenance expenses, like maintenance repair expenses, and also contracted services for maintenance is $68,500. District administration, the smallest component, that's basically the central office budget, the school committee budget is, has, school committee expenses are $12,200, and that includes MASC, the Mass Association for School Committees, which is their governing body, and we are, we are going through a complete review of our policies, our school committee policies with them, and that's the bulk of that fee that you see there. Central office expenses, the business office, the superintendent's office, office supplies, travel expenses, dues, things like that, any consulting services, audit fees, things like that are in that budget. Advertising, most of our advertising now is done through school spring online, but we still do need to have print ads for certain things, so we need to have some money in there. Audit fees, again, and legal fees. The legal fees is another area that I don't believe that we have funded enough. We are currently in contract negotiations with our teachers' union, and we'll be continuing with our other unions. So, this is an area that we did cut to try to arrive at a doable figure, but that's a figure that is, that I have some concerns about next year as well. So, that was a picture of our entire budget, and again, you've got that in your materials in the slides, and you can see in the paper clipped package, if you want to see that in greater detail, it's the yellow piece of paper, okay? So, that breaks down, on one side is salaries, the other side is operational. So, if you want to review that, you can look at your slides, and you can take a deeper look at your yellow piece of paper. So, the next part is, okay, well, that's a big budget, that's a big increase. Why is it so much, and how can it be so much? How do we get there? So, I'm going to review it on the slides, but if you take a look at this one page that has the blue on it, it says, "Budget Increases and Decreases Summary," you'll see that this will follow along with the slide as well, so that's something you can reference if you need to later on. So, our total increase is $509,385,000. The biggest increase, and after I go through these, I'll go through the bigger ones in more, in more detail, is tuition. So, that's our high school tuitions, our out-of-district tuitions. Next increase is salaries, which is our salaries of all of our staff, student transportation, all the bus contracts, utilities. Increase in utilities is based on current use and the usage and the rates that we're facing now. We've underfunded electricity for the past couple of years, and also water and sewer, so this is an attempt to catch up a little bit. Professional development, again, we have some contracted amounts that we need to fund, and then decreases in facilities, a small amount, a decrease in contract services, a small amount, and a decrease in supplies. And that decrease in supplies is recognizing that, because we are looking for an article for some new curriculum, that some of the things that we typically supply in our budget, we won't need to with the, hopefully, the new curriculum that we will be getting. So, salaries, salary increase, $141,246. So, what makes that up is step and contractual increases of our current staff, and we're requesting, we're in need of a couple of new positions, more than a couple, but these are the two that we've put forward in this budget. So, the first position is the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and the second position is the English Language Learner Teacher. With that, right now, we're currently contracting out to the Smet Collaborative for that. The past couple of years, we've seen more and more students that require these services and are mandated to have them. So, right now, we are contracting out for a .8 person. We have students that are in what are called Level One, which is the lowest level of English speaking ability. So, we thought a way to, now that we have enough students, we thought that if we hired our own teacher, we would actually save money from the contract services, and we'd have that person as a 1.0 FTE to do any testing, any of the overlap that some of our staff is currently doing. So, the English Language Learner Teacher, again, it's an offset to contract services, and it actually is going to save $12,006 in the budget. In terms of the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, I'll let Dr. Bailey talk about that for you.
Sure. So, when I started in July, I had an entry plan, and I actually met with at least 11 stakeholder groups, from parents, students, teachers at all grade levels, support staff, and, thank you. We had lengthy conversations about the strengths of the district and about the needs in the district. And I've taken a lot of time to really look at the patterns and trends and what has come back to me, and two big themes that directly impact the budget this year are, I classify them as alignment, curriculum alignment, and student support. Those themes were constantly discussed during my stakeholder groups, my listening tour that I did last spring and into the summer. It was quite clear that we do not have an aligned curriculum pre-K to 8 in the district. We have students who are unprepared for math at the high school, it's been reported back to us for Fairhaven High School. There's been reported issues with transitions from grade four to grade five, once they transitioned to the middle school. In a review of last year's MCAS scores, and this is just a quick average, in ELA, grades three through eight that were tested, 52% of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations, which means that 48% are not for ELA. In math, 51% are meeting or exceeding expectations, and again, 49% of our students are not meeting state standards. And it's worse in science. In grade five, the students who were tested, 45% of students were meeting or exceeding, which once again, means that 55% of our students are not. And in grade eight, science, it goes down from there, 32% are meeting or exceeding, leaving 68% of students who are not meeting and exceeding. Now, we can't do third grade again, kids get one crack at seventh grade, so there is a sense of urgency with this position. This is, we have many more needs in the district, but this will be the start to get a person in this district to align our instruction, our curriculum. We haven't had a curriculum adoption in years, there's no one person coordinating it. All the people from different grade levels were doing their own thing, which is what I heard on my listening tour, so as part of me being hired, this was a big, and this comes from the stakeholders, parents, teachers, students. So, this was a very big theme, and the second big theme that they talked about, in addition to alignment, was student support, the struggling learners, and that directly aligns with the data that I just pointed out to you. Now, this is one test, but we need people to, we need a person to coordinate these tests in between state tests each year, to coordinate it from each school as we move along. Does anybody have any questions about, go ahead?
I just have one question. So, are you saying that our scores are coming down? Do you have the results from before?
No, we're, they're sort of a pattern, they're not, they're a little all over the place with the grade levels, some grade levels are doing better. It's all public. I just read to you the average, okay? So, average ELA in math, you can say 50%, and it goes below that for science.
Do you have the results from the year before?
Not with me, but I can certainly...
I guess I'm just trying to figure out whether, if there's a trend that shows it's continuing to go down.
I will say, though, you can see the trend where our fourth grade scores have been consistently good, solid, and they do go down and drop when the kids go into fifth grade, because again, there's no alignment with the kids' transition from the building. So, we have a lot of work to do, we're prioritizing, but this is a big priority for our district this year. We can't wait, because if we continue to do things the same way, we continue to get the same results. And for me, a child can't do fourth grade more than once, they get one shot at it, we've got to give it our all each year.
Do you think any of it could relate to just the transition from fourth to fifth? Because I remember my son struggled, when he went from fourth to Ford, all of a sudden, there's that, different structure, there's multiple teachers, like, do we do anything to at least identify or eliminate those as some of the causes?
So, that's part of it, but I'll tell you, there's no, there was not a lot of communication between the buildings. We have to do a lot more work on collaboration with our teachers, with professional development. A person who oversees all of the teaching and learning in the district can certainly have that lens from pre-K all the way to 8, so that we can be aligned, because right now, elementary's doing their thing, middle school's doing their thing, and then within the schools, the teachers are all doing their own things.
I know those numbers are purely based on the MCAS results, correct? So, how can you factor in a child who is doing good with their grade work, like they're an AB student, but then they struggle taking a standardized test? How can you factor that in?
So, we have what's called benchmarks, the students take Galileo tests, it's a software The students take Galileo tests, it's a software program, and it's supposed to be a predictor of MCAS. But we don't have any one person in the district currently who's coordinating it. We're actually, this year, working on training our teachers to utilize that software program so that they can use the data to drive their instruction. So that's coming along, but we're at the beginning stages because everybody should be using that program to form their groups. And some teachers are more proficient at it than others. So we're trying to get everybody on a level playing field and get everyone caught up. But that person would actually organize our benchmarks, work with the administrators, work with the teachers to move the, the instruction, doing research on the curriculum. We haven't had a curriculum adoption in years. No one seems to be able to tell me when, when we've had any curriculum adoptions.
I'd just like to add to this, so this is my fourth year on the committee. It's my third year as being part of the Budget Subcommittee. And this curriculum coordinator has been on the, on the pages every single year since I've been on there. And there's always been rationalization of, all right, well, maybe, you know, we had, three years ago, the curriculum coordinator was like a part-time job from the assistant principal at the elementary school. And back then, the previous superintendent was like, we think we can make this work. And here are the MCAS results. And they weren't, they weren't great. And then like, all right, well, let's tweak it a little bit more and let's do the same thing, have the same position, half assistant principal, half curriculum coordinator. Well, let's see what these grades are this year, and it didn't work. So now we're on the fourth year here, and we have now Dr. Bailey to tell us, listen, this half, I don't want to say half-assing, but it's kind of what it is. You need somebody full-time to make sure the teachers are talking to every level. Now, me as a parent, I have a student in the elementary school and a student in the middle school. I thought that was second nature, that teachers talked and everything was coordinated. That is not the case here. There is supposed to be a person that just brings everybody together, shows the data, and has all the teachers in the right order so our kids, when they go to fourth to fifth to fifth to sixth, are prepared. And to me, over the past three years, at least that I know of, that has not been happening. So this is why we made the decision that it's now or never, like, we need this. Or our scores are going to start dropping considerably throughout three years. And we're not improving our school system, and that's our ultimate goal.
Is this the same, I'm sorry?
Do all, is this what, all school districts have a curriculum coordinator?
I would say a majority have a person, the title might be different in some cases. But even though Akushnet is a small district, we still have to do the same, we're still required to do the same thing per DESI. So oftentimes, running a small district is sometimes more challenging because in a larger district, you have the go-to people, you have HR, you have your curriculum department. And in Akushnet, it's very few people in central office. And we're trying to run the district, we're trying to do curriculum, the principals are trying to run their buildings, deal with discipline, all kinds of things. But the meat and potatoes of what we do is teaching and learning, and we don't have a person who's in charge of that. So to me, this position is critical, and it needs to be in our budget.
With this position in other districts, how have the scores affected the MCAS?
I mean, I can tell you the district that I came from, the scores went up. I mean, I could get information for you, but when you have everybody doing their own thing, it's very hard to determine where the problems are and where you can come up with solutions if, if we don't have a baseline for everybody doing, you know, a similar program, a similar way to teach the children writing. So when children move from grade to grade, they're taught by a teacher one way, and then the next year, they learn a whole different way. It's not helpful for kids. So we really need someone with their eye on the teaching and learning in the district so that we can make improvements.
How do the principals and the assistant principals fit into this, this schedule?
I think we level service them, they're the same. When you say "schedule," what do you mean?
In, in the administration of the, you know, the programs and the coordination-
The leadership, oh, yeah. This new position, this person would work with the leadership team and it's most especially the principals and the assistant principals as well as the academic coach. We only have one academic coach in the district right now. The majority of schools in other districts probably have at least two coaches per building, an ELA and a math focus. We have one academic coach for all areas in two buildings. So we've got to give that person a focus. But again, this curriculum director will work with the principals as well as the academic coach to build the teacher's capacity in testing, in teaching and learning, doing the research on curriculum, holding professional development. So if we adopt, we have to actually adopt a new math program this year, the teachers need guidance on that. So working with the teachers and providing them with that job-embedded, consistent professional development throughout the year to give them that support.
That academic coach, that, was that, that's a fairly new position, isn't it? Has that been working out?
Yes. Actually, our scores in writing did go up. It was my understanding that last, when the academic coach was hired, there was a report done by Department of Ed citing that we did not have strong enough support with curriculum and instruction. And also, upon review of analysis of the data, it was showing that our students were not performing well in the written areas of the testing. So that was a big focus for the academic coach, and we're seeing a lot of positive results with that. I don't have it in front of me, but I'm happy with her work.
I just have one other question. I'm wondering, academic, the, the development days, the days off, student, teacher development days-
Professional development days?
Professional development, thank you. Does that not encompass any of this stuff where teachers would collaborate with one another from, from fourth to fifth grade? I mean, I'm just curious, what happens on those days?
So they do, it's basically building the adults' capacity, depending on what it is. So, for example, we have the new, fairly new ed eval system that DESI mandates that we do. Our teachers stated to me very clearly when I started that they needed more professional development on that. So we have been doing this year, ongoing PD, whether it's, some of it's at staff meetings or PD days so that the teachers can have an understanding and they have the support they need so they can appropriately have their binders, their evidence binders. But they're a big part of their evaluation, they have a say in it. And they didn't have a strong understanding in some cases, so we've been doing that. If, we try to differentiate PD, so if maybe new teachers need something, say in behavior management, where a more seasoned teacher wouldn't need that, we try to differentiate. We may bring in a speaker if that's needed to do some professional development. Or we try to get deeper into content so that teachers really have a deep understanding of those standards. Or if there's a new program that they have to implement so that they really understand how to do that. But, you know, we don't believe in the one-and-done sessions, we try to align it. That's why this is super important this year to our budget.
Just a couple of quick questions. What are, what's the ideal candidate for this curriculum coordinator? What's their background? Who would be the right person for this?
Well, definitely, we're still in the process of developing a job description, but I can tell you, I would say at least master's degree would be strongly preferred. Teaching and/or administrative experience preferred. Knowledge of the education field. Obviously, familiar with curriculum, instructional practices, assessments. Experience with development of curriculum.
Where do you find somebody with that experience?
Well, to be honest, these positions are not, you figure in a district, there's usually one or two positions. So they're not widespread. So there are people in the field that as they move up, they do tend, people who love curriculum, let's say, they're passionate about curriculum, those are the folks that may want to go into it. You know, they may have been in the classroom for fifteen years, and they may have an interest in going out of the classroom and working with the adults and with curriculum. But there's definitely people out there, I think, who desire positions such as this.
And we wouldn't be the only district to have this, there are other curriculums-
Oh, no, yeah, there's, yeah.
Most, most, most successful schools have some one person coordinating all of this. Now, when, to me, that, that's common sense, that we would have somebody to, to make sure this is all working, or the principals would do it.
Isn't there, there's, I think, one school system that I know of where there's actually someone who's like an assistant superintendent who's in charge of curriculum?
It could be.
Yeah.
It could be.
We just need a main focus, and we've been dancing around it for years. And, you know, we're, we're looking, as a school committee member, I'm looking at these scores, and I'm looking for an amazing school district. I mean, we have amazing children, we have such support. People move to this area for our school systems. And then I'm seeing scores where forty-nine or forty-eight aren't even meeting expectations. Or even fifty, say, let's say last year it's, you know, sixty-two percent. There's, that's still forty-something percent that, that's not meeting it. That's unacceptable to me.
Do we have a teacher, a teach-the-teacher kind of program here? I know in New Bedford, they do something similar, some of the more experienced teachers, those who have proven to be very successful, mentor the younger teachers, like, are we able to identify, you know?
We actually do have a mentoring program, it's required for new teachers. We also have professional learning community groups where the teachers have common planning time. And I know in the middle school, they're doing a book study, Teach Like a Champion this year. And as a matter of fact, I was at their staff meeting today, and they were actually discussing the chapter and then how they can then implement some of those strategies into their classroom. So there's definitely ongoing job-embedded professional development going on. And from my understanding, that hasn't always been a focus. So we're definitely, I think we've turned the corner with, with that paradigm shift, but we need someone to organize it.
And this would be that person?
Absolutely. It would be a lot. It would definitely be professional development, curriculum, assessment, data management. There's so many reports that they could bring to the table and really work with the administrators and teachers. I can't stress it enough, to me, this is a must. I have children, not in this district, but it would be unacceptable. Nobody should be failing or not meeting standards, especially given that we're at fifty percent average. That's unacceptable to me, to our committee. We need to bring it up. And if we continue to do the same and keep the same budget and go the same way, we will get the same results.
And I know for me, what hits, I've put four, I've put four children through the school system. And what's frustrating, the most frustrating thing that I've encountered is that eighth grade, I was told, you know, your, your child's maxed out, you know, the mathematics system that we have, straight A's across the board. Oh, that's great, I can't, you know, teach her anything more than where she's at, she's doing fantastic. So the placement test comes for high school, and I'm like, why aren't you in this level class in high school? And I felt, clearly, there must be something wrong with the, the testing. And I go back and I get in touch with guidance, and I go, oh, you know, can you just look at her test that she took in eighth grade for the placement for high school? And she didn't pass the test to get, to be able to skip a certain grade, you know, a certain area to go to the next one. And I'm like, really? So here we are, straight A's, being told she's maxed out the program in eighth grade, but yet unprepared to go and skip Algebra One and go into Geometry her freshman year. To me, that was very frustrating. I think one of the key things for me in this position is making sure that that vertical alignment is truly there, no matter what high school these kids, kids want to go to. Granted, as of right now, a majority of them are choosing for Fairhaven High, but even if they're choosing Old Colony or wherever they're going to go, we really need this person, in my opinion, to be going to Old Colony, going, going on New Bedford High and saying, what is it that these kids need to know by eighth grade? And then be able to subsection off our eighth-grade students to take and, and be able to differentiate instruction levels. And we're not able to do that.
So I have a very good friend who taught in a New Bedford middle school. She now teaches at the elementary school. And to, and her best thing, the thing that she learned the most was, she had taught math in sixth grade, and now she was teaching math in fourth grade, and bringing that information in. So I hear everything that you're saying. You know who, you know this person, Jody, you might not know who exactly I'm talking about, but I know you know this person. She now teaches at an elementary school, and she's been asked by New Bedford to be basically a teach-the-teacher and teach everyone, teach all of the teachers of New Bedford, math. Because she's made that gap, she's made, she made the connection herself, so I hear everything that you're saying.
And one of the negatives, we think because we're a small district, that that makes it a little easier. I personally think it can be harder. Because if you are in a district where there's two second grade, you know, two English in sixth grade, you know, when, or if there's two English teachers, you're able to almost work together as a team and make sure that those kids are all learning with seventh grade. We have one, one sixth-grade English teacher, one seventh-grade. And we really need someone to say, this is where we need to be, and, and then trickle it down or, or vice versa. But we need to make sure we're in alignment. And we haven't had anyone looking at our curriculum in years. Our curriculum is way outdated. Even when prior administrations were here, school committee meetings, you could go back on tapes, we were asking, where's our evidence, where's our proof? When was the last time the curriculum had been relooked at, adopted?
Well, they were stretched so thin. You know, because we kept trying, you know, with the budget and everything, to stay low and, and, you know, try to use as many, you know, sources as we could to make this work. And, and in my opinion, we've proven it wrong. We, we can't do it. We need this one.
I couldn't be, I just want to say in front of camera, I could not be, we are blessed to have Dr. Bailey. And she's here, and we're, we're really trying to move the district. And I know we can't do miracles, and I know the town has so much money, and I respect every department. And we will do whatever we can to be team players, absolutely. But we, we, we have a professional who really can get us to that level, and we have to start looking at some of these things.
Do you suspect that the basic curriculum is, is fouled? Is that what-
It's outdated.
It's outdated, which means it just-
And we also are not offering appropriate classes in some cases. I can tell you that my conversations with some high school administrators, they've told me, very matter of fact, that our Akushnet students can't go into those higher-level math classes because they're going in, as Mrs. Tavares just stated, not prepared. Honestly, that all Akushnet kids should have the same opportunities that the Fairhaven High School kids have, that the New Bedford High School have, kids going into the high school have, because it becomes their high school. So our kids deserve those same opportunities, and we need to fix what's broken here. And a way to start that, there's still other things that we need, but a way to start the process is with this position.
Can I just ask something? You mentioned guidance council before, and then the budget here, you have five. Is that something one of those guidance councils' positions could take over? I mean, I, I know when my, my kids were in school, they had an issue with the curriculum, and suddenly you went and seen the guidance council.
Yeah, right. So guidance councils, their biggest focus besides scheduling is really the social-emotional status of kids and their challenges that they may be having. This person would be responsible for the opposite, which are the academic needs. So they don't really have the background, they have more the background with counseling, the social-emotional learning versus this person coming in would have the background and the expertise with curriculum, curriculum teaching, learning, assessment.
Would you still need the five guidance councils, where that part of it could be taken away from it?
We left everything the same because I think Mrs. Flynn will get to it, but we're also seeing an increase in the social-emotional needs of our students coming in. So that's been another area that, in addition to helping our struggling students with their academic needs, we also have to help them socially, emotionally, when they have those challenges. So I would not want to lose counseling positions at this point.
One quick question, and I'll be done. This position, is this supposed to be an administrative position? Is this a teacher-union position?
It would be non-union administrator, they could evaluate. So if they came in with a strong expertise in math or ELA, we could strategically use them to evaluate or really help people with the content in addition to good teaching practices. So depending on who's out there and who we find, but that person could evaluate.
Okay, thank you. Would a teacher like Sue was describing be able to take on some of the role like that and help out?
Teaching is really complex, and right now, our teachers are very, very busy each and every day trying to meet the needs of our students, whether it's with some of the after-school issues, parent meetings. This is definitely a full-time position, there's no doubt. And that's why we made some other cuts that we didn't necessarily agree with. And it's sort of risky, as Mrs. Flynn pointed out earlier. But this is a position that we can't go without, unless you want to get the same results. And I, I've put a lot of work into this entry plan, and a lot of this comes from- And I, I've put a lot of work into this entry plan and a lot of this comes from parents, teachers, students, all the stakeholders. It's, it's, it was very obvious to me. Alignment was probably the number one issue that people spoke about and student support. And then there were things like communication, a sense of community. But as far as a budget, I think the two things that really stood out to me was the curriculum alignment vertically and horizontally as well as student support. And clearly, you know, this is the test that we're judged on. Clearly, we have children who need that support. And so there's a lot to this, you know, there's a lot to this. But our teachers don't have the right resources, they don't have the right support. So we're gonna start that by putting this position in place.
But I think it goes without saying that teachers need to be receptive too, right? So the delivery of this is gonna be mission critical or else you're gonna get the walls that come down?
Absolutely. And you know, we have a lot of great teachers in our district. And I do believe in this academic freedom to do their thing as long as they're following the standards. But we need a base so that we can figure things out in the district. And we've talked about this at our leadership meetings. We have a district improvement team. And we have teacher representatives on each, at each grade level who sit on that and meet with me once a month. So we've had these discussions.
Hopefully they'll feel supported and hopefully we'll get them new curriculum in and some new ideas. And hopefully this person, this position can come in and, and evaluate and support and teach and, and work with them. So they'll finally feel like they have the support, they, they have someone that has the experience that can say, hey, let's try a lesson this way. Or let's look at this, let's look at this benchmark differently. But who can really work together and again, work with the other districts, work with the other grade levels, call grade, you know, call subject area meetings together and say, where are we at with English five through eight?
It doesn't sound like it needs to be somebody with a teaching background more than just an administrative background.
No, they need to have a teacher.
I, I would respectfully disagree. I think it's so important to find people who have had that classroom experience. Because if they can walk the walk and talk the talk and all that.
I think you need a teacher more than.
Oh, okay. I thought you said the opposite.
No, 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 sorry. If I said it that way, that's not what I was thinking. I think you need somebody who's been there in order for them to be able to.
Because I think teachers respect that. Somebody who's been in the classroom.
I am on the same page.
Okay.
I think, cause you would start, it could be a teacher, it could be administrator, but I think.
Right. We prefer both, having some experience in both. But, you know, we also know people need to start at a certain place. But we, we look for the right person, you know, to meet our needs.
So just to review, the bulk of our salary increases are these new positions. Keep in mind, even though the English language learner teacher is saving over all twelve thousand dollars, it's a change from the expense side of contract services into salaries. So that's pushing up salaries. And also the curriculum instruction and assessment director. One thing I want to point out to you, just, you know, for your information, is we try very hard to hire the best people, but also to keep the budget in mind. So this, going from last year to this year, we had a number of resignations, retirements. Through attrition, we were able to save a lot on our salaries. So our baseline salaries from last year to this year were kept down low. So we weren't experiencing a large salary jump. And so that in part allowed us to, to add these positions while keeping the salary increase at, you know, what would typically for us be a moderate level. So we are able to fit in our current contracted staff, all of our current staff, and also these positions. And as you can probably tell, most of that, that increase is the new positions. Because we were able to hire people this year as replacements at lower steps than their, than their predecessors. So that's something we do try to keep in mind from year to year. I was gonna say, yeah, one thousand seventeen. I was gonna say it's around a thousand.
And it's, it's, it's increased.
It has.
The largest we've had in quite a few years, right?
Gee, we could just hire everybody at Twitter and stay home.
So that's just the two schools that does, what about the high schools? Oh, we have that number.
It's coming. Yeah, it's coming.
The high schools were budgeting for two hundred ninety-eight for next year, including school choice. So school choice could be students who go to other high schools, but it could also be K to A schools as well or any virtual.
But that excludes OC plus OC. I don't think we're showing.
Right, we're not showing OC, no.
Which is another budget altogether.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just thinking of bodies.
And OC's gotta be one fifty.
I think it's around that, yeah. Okay, so we talked about the positions, two of the positions that we need, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment and the ELL teacher. We also heard from our principals and our special ed director of some positions that are needed. But we at first included them in the budget, but once we saw the, what the budget figure was going to be, we said we really need to focus and prioritize. So just, just so everyone is aware, we do, we did, we did receive a request from the elementary school for a classroom teacher. Some of you may know that this year's kindergarten class is quite large, larger than, than in years past. So this was an attempt to equalize that going forward. And this might be somebody who next year would be the grade one teacher or the grade two teacher after that. So depending where the larger class was. But these are not included in this budget. It, we would have liked to have included them, but we were not able to. We also heard from our middle school principal who thought that a reading specialist would be needed here and also a math coach. We have one coach, as Dr. Bailey said, right now, last year she was focusing a lot on ELA and on writing. But we do see in other school districts, schools will have a math coach and an ELA coach. We have, again, we have one person for both schools. So where other school districts would have four people typically, we have one. So this was an effort to bring that into our building. We also, both AES and FMS moved to, wanted to move at some point in time to a library media specialist. And that would be somebody who is a teacher, who oversees the library and, and media. A lot of things now are more online. It's digital focused. There's a lot more than just the librarian checking out books anymore. So that's a focus to, to bring us up to the current times. The special ed director has in the past, and again this year, requested a board certified behavior analyst. Right now, we have, we outsource some of that. And it's just helping the teachers and the paras and the schools with the behaviors that we're starting to see. And also we wanted to increase some hours for our, one of our technology assistants. Because as you can imagine, every year, we get more and more technology into the buildings and we need people to, to manage them and update everything. So those are just some of the positions that, in a perfect world, we would have liked to have had, but we didn't go for them. But I just wanted you all to know that, you know, these are some needs that going forward. As Mrs. Gole said, you've seen the curriculum director come up for several years. So going forward, you may be seeing these positions come up in years to come. So the next budget adjustment is tuition. And this is one of our highest ones, high school tuition increase. We're expecting twenty-four more students next year compared to this year. Some of you may know, last year, we had a very small eighth grade class. So we were able to lower that, that portion of our budget. This year, we're back to normal levels. And we also had some students move in over the summer from other communities that have affected our budget, not only this year, but now they become part of the base in years to come. So you're gonna see that we have twenty-four more students that we're budgeting for from, from this year to next year.
How much is it per student? Is it different for Haven High and New Bedford?
It's roughly the same. Fair Haven is ten thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars for a regular ed student. And a special education student would vary because it's depending on what services they receive. So New Bedford High tuition is ten thousand one hundred and seventy-six. So right around ten thousand. And we also tuition out to Bristol Aggie as well. But that's a lower tuition because part of their, part of their expense is an assessment to the town on the town side of the budget. But there is a per student tuition that we have in our budget.
And this question, this is about two-thirds of your budget increases right here in this line item.
Yes, and that's, yeah, that's very important to know. You have in your packet, the sheet that I said had the blue lines on it. And that's, you know, when we look to our budget and of course, we, we want to ask for what we need to maintain our services, but also improve our services. And that's what you saw with the curriculum director. But we also try to keep in mind what the town as a whole can bear. So even though our increase that we're requesting is on the higher side than what may have been expected, I think it's important to see where this increase is coming from. And that sheet that I directed you to really shows what we're facing. It's most of the increase of the five hundred and nine thousand, almost two hundred and ninety thousand of it is tuition.
Keeping in mind, two students just walked in the door this week and they're not even included in this budget. So it's very unpredictable and it's out of our control, but we have to budget for them.
So you would really say that we're, we're looking at most of the increases in the budget this year are due to more students coming to Acushnet.
Exactly.
We're building a great many homes and that brings families. You know, we've been saying that for years. And we've had, in my estimation, we've had a building boom in the last couple of years. And it's beginning to reflect that in, in, in our expenditures. It's not necessarily just rising cost, you know, and maintenance of, of operations. We're just seeing little kids coming to Acushnet.
This, this budget is level service. There's no fluff in it. And I can tell you that last year's enrollment was nine hundred sixty-three. Now we're at one thousand seventeen. It's a big difference.
I have one more question that's kind of related. We send ninety percent of our high school kids to Fair Haven. I mean, the kids that aren't going to Old Colony. And I, this might be a sore subject, but we talked a year ago about studying an affiliation with Fair Haven High School. And we brought it to a town meeting. I know it's a sore topic, but we couldn't bring ourselves to study bringing the systems together for some reason. Is that something that we'd still consider? And, and I mean, if we, if we did study it, are savings possible if we had a formal arrangement? Do we, do we feel that they're, they're fairly passing on the charges of educating our children?
So you are correct in everything you said. We, as a leadership team, have been meeting monthly with the administrators at Fair Haven just because the majority of our students are attending there. And we also have some similar needs. So whenever we can come up with some ideas to have a cost savings, as Mrs. Flynn mentioned, we do that. Whether it's with transportation. As a matter of fact, at our next school committee meeting next week, I've invited the superintendent to attend our meeting. And we're going to talk about a strengthened partnership, at least this year, moving forward so that, you know, you might see someone from Acushnet in the Fair Haven schools having a meeting. You might see a couple of people from Fair Haven in our district. We might get support with a special classroom from a position that they have in Fair Haven so that we, we can't afford to purchase full-time, but we can work together. And that's what we've been talking about, ideas. So we're not quite where the formal study or what had happened in the past. But I do think you do have administrators from both districts coming together to want to be working together in the best interest of our kids. And they, they have a vested interest because they know they're receiving, I think, one-third of their high school is Acushnet students. So.
That new agreement that we had with Fair Haven allowed for some of what you're, you're talking about and created collaboration between the two. It was one step probably. And what we do is making, you know, what, thinking at the time when we were implementing that, that agreement was basically, let's see this work. Let's see, you know, let's see how far we can go with it, with that type of agreement, you know, in, in collaboration. So then, 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 once that's out of the way, then we can work, you know, then look at, at the next step incrementally. And I think that was the, the, the thinking at the time.
Yeah.
When we did that agreement, it'd be interesting to know, prior to that agreement, what our tuition costs would have been with Fair Haven.
From a school committee?
Does that slow down?
We would be way out of it.
Right. That's slow, you're right, Mr. Houtcroft, because you were on the school committee at the time. And that slowed down the acceleration of the tuition. So rather, every year, the tuition, we'd get a three percent increase on top of a three percent increase the year before. So it was accelerating pretty quickly. And this agreement that, that the school committee at the time and Dr. Donovan had negotiated with Fair Haven based the tuition on the, a Department of Ed figure, the school choice rate. And then with a percentage for recognizing that it's high school, you know, that high school needs costs more. So there's an agreement in there and that slowed down the rate of inflation for our, our high school tuitions. And you are correct that, you know, while we can't, you know, really say at this time how much money we've saved through that, I would say with confidence that it has, we have saved money overall and it has slowed down the rate of acceleration.
The big question was getting off the point, but of this budget, but the regionalization of would it be in turn cause an increase? Where we probably, you know, reached a threshold of, of a very, you know, pragmatic agreement which saved, saved, you know, this community, you know, a great deal of money in my estimation. So if we go to the next step, we'd be very careful about getting into some costs that we're not, you know, responsible for at this time. I just want to add that.
But just, just so I can add in, as a school committee member, we have our superintendent working very hard with the other superintendent in Fair Haven as well as Mrs. Flynn, you know, spending time trying to figure out ways to save money for us. However, that study, as Mr. Cabral just mentioned, might have done that for us and it saved them time. So I'm just bringing that back up. As a school committee member, I, I would have personally liked to see a study done so we wouldn't have the time spent by superintendents and Mrs. Flynn.
And we know we can't do everything at once, but what we, we're going into it with, if we can pick one or two things this year and do it well with some cost savings, that's what we're looking at. So we, we have ongoing conversations. We've got some ideas on the table that will help both districts. So as long as we both benefit, you know, it's been good conversation.
I just want to get back to the chase to, to draw to everybody's attention, including the public, that the increases in this budget, in my estimation, after looking at everything, is basically due to more children that are coming to Acushnet. And, and not due to any other type of costs within the budget. I think that's a very important point.
It is. I think the most important thing for you all, if you go back and review the materials, is this one sheet that shows exactly where all the increases come from. And I believe also included is a sheet that's multi-colored that shows our tuitions. Cause I feel that this is important for people like yourselves that are making decisions to know, okay, last year, we budgeted for two hundred and seventy-seven high school students. This year, it's, we're expecting two hundred and ninety-eight. And how we do this is we take our current high school students and then we take off grade twelve, right? Cause they're graduating. And then we add in our grade eight students. And we survey the grade eight students to see, where are you going? Are you going to Old Colony? Are you going to Fair Haven? Are you going to New Bedford? The students that are going to Old Colony, we don't worry about in the budget per se, because that's not in our budget. When we do have to worry about them is when they change their minds. And unfortunately, part of this increase, we saw from that, from last year to this year. We had several students who, at the time of the budget last year, said, nope, I'm going to Old Colony. But when September came, when we got the enrollments for Fair Haven, they were enrolled in Fair Haven. So we had some students who, who had changed their mind. In fact, that's impacting our budget this year. We're going to have a deficit in high school tuitions. Luckily that our salaries can cover from those salary savings I talked to you about. But for example, we had around eleven students who either changed their mind, transferred into Fair Haven from Old Colony, Bristol Aggie. That's about a twelve hundred dollar tuition, school choice after our budget was set. We had another ten students move in over the summer that attended Fair Haven High School. Ten students, that's a lot. I mean, it seemed like every time I walked through the registration office, we had a student registering, ten students. Six students moved out, so the net, that is four. So, okay, but that's forty thousand right there. And so that's, you know, that's what we're facing. So those students became part of the base in addition to the larger eighth grade class. So that's why you see the big increase in tuition. So this is a really important piece of information to look at as well. Like I said, from last year, at this time, we were budgeting for two hundred and seventy-seven students. This year, we're budgeting for two hundred and ninety-eight. Out of district, it went down slightly, even though we're budgeting for one more student. But really, this is, this number is not true anymore because of those two new students that we're going to have to fit in somehow. Circuit breaker, our reimbursement. Circuit breaker, our reimbursement went up this year because our costs went up. So we got, we had more costs, so we got more money. So that's good. We can push that forward as an offset to next year's budget. I don't anticipate that we're going to be prepaying any tuition. Usually we take that off. Prepaying is when we might have some money at the end of the year, but because of our additional tuitions this year, the big deficit that I said that we've had, I don't think at this time that I feel comfortable putting that into the budget. So instead, we're going to plan to use that special education stabilization fund, which is not, which is not ideal, but if we didn't use it, our budget would have to be 50,000 higher. So I think, you know, as Mr. Howcroft said, it is important to know that the bulk of our increases are coming from tuition.
Another question. Lower income children. Are those numbers increasing?
I believe so because our free and reduced percentages are increasing. And so we see our, our students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch has, has increased over the years. So they are increasing, I believe.
That plays an important role as far as some, many of the support networks they get, you're talking about in the budget. If that number increases, so, so does the more intensified type of work that needs to be done in the classroom. So it correlates, we have a rising number of students plus a rising number of low, lower income students. And that, that requires somewhat more intervention. Am I correct in that?
Sometimes, but not all the time. We have students who perform well and then when you look at their growth over the year, they're flat. So they still perform well, you know what I mean? But they didn't grow. So those are things that we're trying to work with our teaching staff and again, getting in alignment. And I think one of the ladies over here mentioned that a student can get all these and perform well, but when it comes down to taking a standardized test, some of our children are not performing as well as they should be performing. And we have the numbers to prove that.
More of our budget adjustments. Student transportation went up about 85,600. The contract increase in the big yellow bus, and that's about 3% from one year to the next. And that's based on the bid. So those are actual figures. That's not an estimate by us. Special education, we have a deficit in special education transportation this year. So this is taking a look at all the students that we have and predicting what their rides are going to cost next year. And we realize we need to add 50,000 to special education. Again, we are really getting some favorable costs on some of our routes that we can share with New Bedford, Fairhaven, Marion, and whomever else. Just for example, a lot of our routes to send a van out for one student, maybe there's two students on it, maybe there's three students, it's around $250 to $265 per day round trip. So that's to get a student from their home in Akushnet to their placement in wherever it may be. It may be, like I said, it may be locally and may be in Seekonk, but those are the prices that we're seeing. And we make every effort to be as competitive as possible. In the summertime, at the start of the summer, for our summer programs, we'll send all of our routes out to probably five or six transportation companies and ask them to bid on it. And whoever get, usually whoever is the lowest will go with them unless we have some reason to believe that their services are not, that are not that great. And we, we work with some vendors that we are pretty confident in working with. And we'll do that again for our, our fall routes. And so that's, that's what we're seeing. Some of the routes are a little bit less. The cost shares clearly are less, but some of them to go out to Seekonk or Somerset are 250 to 265 dollars per day. So I think that's important to put that into perspective because that's a big number, right? But that's, that's what we're facing. And again, we've got about 16 students that get out of district placement rides. Some students may be getting a private ride because if they're going to Fairhaven High or New Bedford High, but their IEP requires private transportation, we may be running a small van or a bus out to Fairhaven High or a New Bedford High. But, you know, do know that we make every effort to, to keep as many children on the same route as possible. Sometimes that's not always possible due to the age or due to their disability or due to whatever needs they have or the fact that they might be the only one going into this area. Our vendors will also work with us, even if we haven't identified, you know, cost shares, they'll say, hey, I have, I'm picking up these kids in Fall River to go to Seekonk. If you want, I can put your kids on that van and save money. So, you know, this is an area that is a costly expenditure for school departments. It's unpredictable, but we do try our very best to keep it as contained as possible. Again, we had to increase the McKinny Vento and Foster students by that amount. Originally, it was more. You'll see in some of the cuts that we had to make that we shaved that down a little bit.
So also just to let you know, I'm on the budget subcommittee and looking at these transportation costs just sometimes blows your mind. So we have even thrown out things of how about, we have our own buses. We, we supply our own buses or our own vans for the McKinny Vento or special education. And we're working out with those numbers, but they're, they're not as cost effective as, as you and I might think they are. Like, oh, if we just have ours and we can save, you know, 15,000 or 50,000 with the insurance and maintenance and, and everything, it's not, it's not as cost effective as, as maybe you and I would think. Just to let you know, we are trying everything to lower costs.
Just your health insurance cost would prohibit.
Right. So, but we're looking at, like I said, I just want.
Put that on the table, say.
But I would like the finance committee to know that, that we do really sharpen our pencils and we do have the ideas of trying to lower costs, but when we start looking at the real numbers, it's just, it's not working.
So some other budget adjustments. Small utilities, based on what we're seeing for actual costs, we pushed that up a little bit. Professional development, again, some of that is contractual. We shaved off a little bit in facilities, a little bit in contract services. And keep in mind, contract services went down because we pulled out that contract service for the ELL teacher, which we would be paying roughly 68,000 to SMET for. We pulled that out of the expense side contract services and pushed it into salaries. So that's what's driving that small decrease there. And again, supplies, supplies went down because we will be requesting an article for curriculum, updating curriculum. So this is one, another way to look at our budget. We have the cost centers. So the biggest costs are in our district budget. That's our high school tuitions, not our special ed high school tuitions, but our regular ed high school tuitions, our bus contract, medical and health services, technology, security, some district-wide maintenance things. So that's what you see for 27%. The next same amount for special education, our contracted services, our special ed salaries, which include teachers and administrator and some support staff, PARAs. Also any, like I said, the contract services, any of our special ed out of district tuition. So that's a big component of our budget. The next largest is our elementary school budget, everything that it takes to run the elementary school, including salaries. Same thing with Ford Middle School is 20% and central administration is 3%. And this is typical over the years. Sometimes the district and sped changed places. Ford Middle School and AES is usually around 23, 20, 20 to 23%. So this is typical, typical distribution. Here's the numbers behind it, behind that graph that you saw, what makes up our, just another way to look at the budget. So we talked about how to get to the number that we have. And like I said, it's probably, it's not ideal. It's not what you probably were expecting, but we felt it important enough to, to include those salaries and that we were able to take a closer look at our budget and trim off some costs. So the biggest one, you see Fairhaven High School, three students. So we took off three student tuitions. And those are students who, based on experience that we've had from, especially from last year to this year, we said, holy cow, we had so many students from Old Colony change their mind, go to Fairhaven. We had students move in. So originally, we put in a contingency for some students that may just pop up between now and September. So we said, well, we're going to budget based on what we know for sure. So we took that contingency out and that's living on the edge a little bit because we could have a student move in, we could have a student change their mind, but.
It's happened all year.
It's happened all year.
Bishop staying student, you know, they, they move over to Fairhaven. They live in Akushnet. We now have a $10,000 tuition. So that's risky, but, you know.
And unfortunately, every student, one student equals $10,000. So those numbers can add up. Legal fees, we originally had put in a little bit higher based on the fact that we anticipate being in contract negotiations, but we trimmed that back a little bit. Again, we put in a higher utilities amount based on current usage and current rates. We trimmed that back. We trimmed back some math supplies and materials at the middle school because that's the, some of the, some of the curriculum that we will be purchasing. We'll take care of that. We don't need as much at the middle school. Custodial and maintenance expenses, we cut back. We had increased them based on, you know, what we're seeing now. That's always an account that's in deficit, but we cut that back to level funded. Site testing, same thing. We originally had more in McKinny Vento and Foster transportation. We cut that back. Substitute salaries, we shaved off a little bit. Same thing with some nursing salaries, a little bit on the PD conferences and travel and a little bit on the late bus. So next year, we will not have as many late buses as we do this year. So I think we might have one or two less late buses, one or two days less of late bus. But that gets it closer to level funding. So a lot of these, other than the tuition and legal fees to some extent, you're going to see that these are level, going back to level funding a lot of our accounts. And again, so that was an effort to try to, to look at our budget and be as, as possible while still trying to fit in what our high needs are.
Can I just ask a question about the tuition? I know years ago, I think you corrected a lot of this, we're only paying for students that live in Akushnet. I know there were some that floated. I mean, is that, do you have that under control?
We do. We do our very best. We have a position that, that part of that position coordinates with our residency officer. We have a, a part-time residency officer who will investigate claims. We have a method for teachers and staff to report if they don't think a student is living in Akushnet. And certainly it doesn't, it's not strictly related to teachers and staff. If, if any community member is aware, they can certainly report it to us and we will, you know, we'll take a look at it and put it out for investigation. I know, I believe it was either last year or two years ago, we saw that we decreased our high school enrollment by around six students because of efforts. We were able to, to do that. And when we do have some of these cases, those are the higher priority cases, right? Because they're costing an actual tuition to send, send the student out. So we do try our very best. We do rely on the community and the staff to report if people are not living in Akushnet and then we, then we do our best to, to relocate them. So. So this is just a chart of our budget from FY 11 to FY 20 that shows the percentage increases from year to year. So it runs the gamut from a 0% increase to a slight decrease to again, kind of keeping it pretty much level funded in 2003. We started the increase in 14, 15, back down in 16, way back down in 17, 18, a 3%. Last year, a 2.5% and this year, 3.585. So I think it's important to know that we have tried to keep our budget within, you know, manageable levels over the years and this, this pretty much shows it. But as Dr. Bailey said, sometimes there, there is a great need and we do feel that we do need to request that and, and make the community aware that we do need some of these things to improve our schools. You know, we, if we want to stay the same, then, you know, then, then we don't take any steps to improve, but taking steps to improve is costly. And, and we put such a priority on that, that we, as we saw, decrease some of our costs to try to, to balance that off. So one thing, we do get aid from the state, chapter 70 aid. As many schools, we're just getting the minimum $20 per pupil increase. So from last year to this year, we're getting 25,440 more. So that's what we're getting from the state in chapter 70. And chapter 70 is state aid to schools. So this budget summary is, as you can see, the amount that we're requesting, the increase, the percentage increase. Chapter 70 will pay for $6,348,772 of it, which is roughly 43%. So the town contribution would be just under 57% for that. And then lastly, we do have some capital requests. I did pass that out to you. Over the past couple of years, Mr. Noble has been very good to all departments and has, we never, you know, in the past, we never, we never requested capital requests. So, but now the buildings are older, they're requiring more and Mr. Noble has included us and said, you know, we need to start, you know, doing preventative maintenance and keeping up with some of the things. So our biggest one we talked about was curriculum. I think Dr. Bailey has talked, you know, a lot about that. I don't know if you have anything else to add.
I will just say that this year, for example, the middle school math program is ending. So no matter what, we need to purchase a new math program at the middle school, which obviously we would want it to align with what we do at the elementary school, but the priority is the middle school math program. So if this capital request does not get approved or funded, we need to go take a hard look at our budget because that needs to happen, that the, the current program they're using is just, it's going to be non-existent after this year. So that's why that's our first priority up there.
So we also have the roof preventative maintenance. Last year, we had, I believe we were funded for 50,000. We spent about 13,000 right now and I do believe we're expecting another invoice to do some, some repairs on the roofs. We had a roof condition study done in the fall as part of the first step of having to replace our roofs. And what the study told us, it was better news than we thought, said that the roof here, which is, which is with the new construction from 2002, is in decent shape and it, they wouldn't recommend, it's not in need of replacement for, for probably 10 years. So that's good news. The newer part of the elementary school roof, same thing, but there is a section, about 63,000 square feet of the elementary school, that is 47 years old, that needs to be replaced. The, the study had said it's performed well, we've maintained it, but it's going to require continuing repairs and we're seeing that. We have, we are chasing leaks at the elementary school. We have some leaks here at the middle school that we're repairing, but we are in the pipeline for the Mass School Building Authority funding for roof, a roof repair for the elementary school. That funding is not eligible for this roof or the newer section of the elementary school because those simply are not old enough and don't meet the criteria yet. But in years to come, we'll have to look at that. But in order for this year, for now, we'd like to just refill that account. We're not asking for the same 50,000, but we think maybe by the end of the year, right now, we spent about 13. We have another invoice outstanding, so right now, we put that in at 25,000. The cafeteria wall between here, in the Ford Middle School, between the gym and the cafeteria, it is in dire need of repair. It no longer moves as it should. It's torn, it's, it's, it needs to be replaced. So we got a quote to replace it and believe it or not, those things cost between 60 and 80,000. 80,000 is for a totally electronic one that doesn't have to require like humans to, to move it, open it and close it. So we did put that in there. Burglar alarm upgrade, the system is from the renovation. Same thing with the fire. They're both still working, but we're finding it harder and harder to, to repair it. Some of the components are out of date, they're obsolete and it's time to do an upgrade. AES server room, air conditioning that room, that room houses a lot of technology equipment, servers and a lot of equipment that we need to maintain a consistent temperature. So this will, we did that over here for our server room in the middle school. So we need to do that in the elementary school to preserve our equipment. We have a gym door here at Ford Middle School that, per the building inspector, we need to replace. It has to do with the crash bar and we did get a quote for that and believe it or not, that's also $8,000. We're looking at upgrading the HVAC server and there's a lot of requests here, so we, we. we just wanted to put forward anything that we identified in our capital improvement committee that we've been meeting a couple of times so far this year, and these are the big, like, structural items that, that we've identified that we need to, to take a look at. So the HVAC server, it controls the temperature, of course, in the building, so that we can take a look and, and see, and, you know, maintain the temperature. Someone says, my room is cold, take a look at it, oh, we know that this isn't working in that part of the room, or that's not working, and try to time, put a timer on the heat. So to try to save money, that system is probably, I'd say, seven years old by now, so we're seeing that, we need to upgrade that, and that's something else that we have a quote out for.
The snow.
So we also have a request for technology equipment refreshing, and several years ago, we were fortunate to get the ARO grants that we use to buy a lot of our, um, in-focus projectors, whiteboards, front row systems. All of these are starting to, to die, to require replacement parts, and to do that across the whole district, cost is going to cost a lot of money. So what we would like to do is get into the habit of every year, refreshing our equipment and putting a continuous article for technology equipment refresh. The roof condensers, we really need them at both schools, they're more dire at the elementary school, and those keep the refrigeration and freezer equipment in our cafeterias running. And we've had quite a few repairs this year on both, and the technician has said, you know what, it's time to replace these. We can keep, we can keep repairing them, and we can keep charging you a lot to repair them, or you can think about replacing them. So they're about $10,000 a unit, we have three at the elementary school and two at the middle school, and elementary school ones are in worse shape, so we decided to go for that, because we thought $50,000 might be a little bit too much. Driveway repair is just to continue to upkeep the, the pavement throughout the, throughout the school campus. We had an article last year for $54,000, so we put that on for this year. And again, the special education stabilization fund, to fund that for $100,000, and that is to help us in years that we have unexpected costs. Now certainly, we're hoping not to have to tap that this year, we don't think we're going to have to, we think we can manage some of those unexpected costs through our salary savings, but if it becomes a year where we don't have a lot of, a lot of salary savings, and we do, for instance, next year, we're using that to balance the budget, so we would like to refill that article as well. And we also had an article, we don't have a quote on that now, but to put some air conditioning in the central office area. Right now, we're running about one, two, three, four, five window air conditioners, and they are, they hog a lot of electricity, they're loud, they're not efficient, and they don't keep up with the, the...
The space.
The space that we have, so we thought if we could look into, um, air conditioning, but we don't have a quote for that yet, but that is something that, you know, is on the pipeline. So those are, those are some of, those are our requests for this year, but certainly the most important one is the curriculum. And as Dr. Bailey said, if that is not approved, then we're going to have to push it back into our budget, because we do have to do something with that math curriculum. In addition, I think some of the standards are changing for science and social studies that we need to do as well.
Are we teaching, um, Common Core? Is that the math curriculum that's taught?
Yep, we have the state standards that we have to go by.
Yeah.
I just wanna take a moment to thank the budget subcommittee, as well as Mrs. Flynn. I know the number of hours that we've put into going, I mean, we were a 7-point-something percent increase originally with our needs, we went back, and we went back, and we went back, and as you, um, heard tonight, the majority is tuition, those are all, um, things out of our control, there is no fluff in this budget at all, and if we have to make additional cuts, it's going to mean looking at positions, unfortunately. Um, so we're hoping that we don't have to go there, um, but that will impact class sizes, and that's, again, that's why people move to a cushionet, so I've been told, um, for things like that, because there's really no other place in this budget, we've cut every place that we could find cuts.
We don't have any more things to cut anymore.
Right.
Any more supplies.
We can't cut tuitions.
And, you know, when you look at what makes up our budget, we have supplies, some of the supplies, some of the, you know, central office, maintenance, it's a very small component on that, on that pie chart, so there's really not a lot left.
Question on the, on the capital items, as I, as I go through the list, and I heard the explanation, and I, I heard that curriculum's number one, so I wrote a number one next to that, and it, I think there are 13 items here, 15 items. If you looked at these, could you rank them, and maybe there are a bunch of number ones, but there are some number twos?
Mm-hmm.
So maybe they're all ones and twos, as you're prioritizing the things that gotta, gotta, gotta get done this year, versus the things that, and ideally, everything would be done this year, but there have to be things here that you look at, and you say, this one's more important than that one, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of money here, and I'm...
Oh, yeah, there is, there is.
Back to the finance committee, I suppose, but, um, you know, if, if you could prioritize these things, I think that'd be helpful to, to everyone.
You know, not including the special ed stabilization article, it's 315,000, and that doesn't include the three items that we don't have quotes on yet, too, so...
So we know that.
We know that it's a lot, um, but it's important for...
Like the cafeteria.
Yeah, right.
I, I encourage them to put on the list. We need to know if we make decisions not to do it, what we're not doing.
Yeah, we don't want to put maintenance, I mean, we wanna be aware of it.
You know, we've got, uh, this is a tremendous investment in these two buildings, and they are now a point where you were able to scoop by without doing the maintenance, well, that's over. So we're gonna have to put some maintenance into our biggest, these are our two biggest buildings, so we're gonna have to put some maintenance into it, but I'm not sure that we can do everything at once. So we are gonna have to assign some priorities, and I have to be honest with you, there's tremendous cooperation from the schools, uh, with town departments on working through some of the issues, and we think we can maybe trim these numbers a little bit by using some in-house labor, for example, the emergency doors at the gym, uh, is a possibility, we can take that off. There's some other things that we might be able to do, as you know, we sent two of our people to HVAC school this year, so let's see if we can do some of that work that they need done in-house, so...
One thing we were able to remove was the repairing the, the chimney at the elementary school. It sticks up off the roof, it's a black cylinder that you see, when you take a look at it from above, some of it is corroded, so the DPW is going to be helping us fix that, and I would imagine that that would be very costly to get, um, an outside vendor to repair that for us, but it's certainly something that, we can't have holes in the chimney, because what's happening is the rainwater, the snow, is going down into it and affecting the mechanics of, of the heating equipment. So that's something that, you know, we need to repair very soon.
And I just wanna say, since I've been in the district, I have seen tremendous support from all of the, the departments in town, and it's so nice to work together, um, we all have needs and we all prioritize, but when we can meet together and communicate, it's been great, so I really appreciate the ongoing conversations, um, so that we can get these things done for our families and our children in the district.
In all sincerity, this isn't gonna be easy.
I understand.
Okay, right, right now, we, we're not able to close the budget, we're off about half million, if you go to your 3.58% budget, we're off $650,000. So I think, you know, to be honest with you, we might be able to, I, I mean, I can think of some ideas, and we're gonna save some money in health insurance this year, and I can, you know, do that, so I can close it a little bit, but when it gets down to that much numbers, it's gonna hurt. Just to give you a perspective on $650,000, that's the entire budget of the highway department. So we can do this, we just have to close the highway department, so, you know, if that's okay, you know.
Well, no, but maybe we could take a little from every other department, just to help us out.
Well, let me give you an idea of perspective, you're asking for another $150,000, that's the entire budget of the senior center. It's darn near the entire budget of the library, so, you know, I, I need you to hold this sort of in perspective, that this is not going to be easy, and I'm sure glad that I'm not on the finance committee, 'cause they're gonna be really unpopular this year.
Please send Roger back to help us.
Back, back to you. One quick question, the $50,000 that you were taking out of the stabilization, special ed, the, is that going to just generalize, balance the budget, was that going to the special ed specific, or...
What that did in the budget is our out-of-district tuitions would have been $50,000 more, so the actual out-of-district tuitions, when we add up all of our students that are in placements, was $50,000 higher. So we figured out how much we're required based on the students and their placements for next year, and we said, okay, so of that, we'll use $50,000 from the stabilization article to pay for some of it, and we also had around $50,000 of the circuit breaker reimbursement. So the actual tuitions are over $100,000 higher than what you're seeing in the budget, but we're using those revenue offsets to balance it.
And you remember, Eric, that we created that stabilization account, so they would not have to put an artificial number in...
Right.
For special education, so this is why we put the money away, this is why it's used, this is correct.
Okay.
Question, follow-up question, though? Did we, we, we started with $100,000 in that account, and we're adding, proposing to add $100,000 this year, and we're taking 50 out.
Correct.
So we'd end up with 150, and I understand what the stabilization's for, and I like the idea, but just, just looking at it, I mean, if you had to cut something, would that, would it be fair to say that $100,000...
On that article?
That's creating a cushion, maybe we don't create that cushion, is that, if I'm understanding it correct, you'd still have 150 in stabilization.
Things I don't wanna do is encourage them...
We like stabilization.
The, the reason you wanna put, I mean, I'm not saying we're not gonna be, we're gonna have to make some cuts.
Or you could, or you could close the highway department.
We're, we're gonna have to make some cuts.
We need them.
But the counterargument to that one is that if I don't provide that safety net they created in their budget, so I'd rather create the safety net on the hope that they don't use it, and it would've been my preference that if we had started putting money aside in stabilization for special education long ago, we'd have more of a cushion, so you could even skip a year of funding.
And actually, there is no, there has not been a safety net for many years, because we just, you know, the years of having safety nets are out the window. We used to have safety nets in high school tuition for, you know, more than just a couple students that might change their mind, but as the budgets, you know, grew in terms of salaries, in terms of other tuitions, we had to let go of those safety nets, and we, with all of our tuitions and all of our salaries, we budget based on who we have now and who we think with some degree of certainty we're going to have next year. So this stabilization article is helping us for those students who move in, right? So those students that move in over the summer, or that change placements, it's not uncommon, it's, it's not, it's not happening all the time, but we do have students who have their, their IEPs reviewed, and now they require a different placement, a more costly placement, or maybe they require some additional services. So, so those are some of the things that pop up between now and September, and, you know, unfortunately, they, they do happen, and this year was kind of the perfect storm for our high school tuitions, for our out-of-district tuitions, for our move-ins, for some of the repairs that we've had to make with the roof repairs. Fortunately, we had a roof repair article that has helped us out with that, um, so this was kind of a, a bad year, but we're gonna, you know, as I've been saying, we're gonna just skate to the finish, I don't anticipate at this time a deficit, other than what these two new tuitions that we are, what we're facing now, what those are gonna do to this year's budget, but we should be able to still, you know, figure that out, even if we have to tap some of our, a few of our revolving funds to do it.
Does anyone know where we stand on the, the state aid and kind of the...
We're level funding state aid. There's one, one adjustment we'll probably make in the, uh, excise tax revenue forecast, which would be about the only one I would change.
I, I, my question was more towards, isn't the state looking at how they're calculating that and redetermining the calculus?
Yeah, everything I've seen in those proposals doesn't give us a heck of a lot more.
Does not?
No.
Okay.
We're, we're considered actually a rich community, so we're not a target for that.
Isn't our average salary about 50?
REQ view is a little lower, but they're going after like western Massachusetts towns, um, and some inner city, you know, some city school systems that are in trouble.
I thought our average income, household income was somewhere in the 50s.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not on the hit parade, as far as I could see. I've looked at every proposal that they've come forward, we're just not there.
117,000 poverty. Yeah, but, yeah, and the cushionet, we're like, I haven't looked at it in a few years, but I thought we, our mean and average was somewhere in the mid-50s.
Right, so I would like to see more funding for education generally, but the, all the proposals I've seen out of Beacon Hill don't tend to seem to, don't give us much, a little bit, I mean, we'll take it, we're not gonna refuse it, but it's not gonna solve our problems.
That's not resolved anyways.
Sorry?
That's not, it, it's not resolved anyways, there's no change to it.
No, no, there's been a push, there's been a push to review the foundation budget, I think we had meetings at New Bedford, um, for local communities to talk about it, and there's a lot of ideas, but nothing has changed yet. I believe the governor had a plan, um, some ideas, but that's not affecting us yet, and unfortunately, in our community in a cushionet, the state recognizes that, that us, and with addition to other communities, they think that we're where we, where we should be, so that's why we only get the minimum increase, the $20 per student increase every year, because we're, where we should be supposedly in the formula. Other communities are higher, so they, they kind of get brought down incrementally, other communities are lower, and they get brought up incrementally, but unfortunately, I mean, fortunately or unfortunately, we're where the state believes we should be.
Any other questions, comments? Well, the news wasn't as good as we thought we were gonna get, obviously, but, uh...
I blame Mr. Noble.
Pardon me?
I blame Mr. Noble, his news was, absolutely.
Yeah, well, he was leading us down the garden path, and apparently, we got here, and the garden path stuck, but, uh, in any event, we don't have all the numbers, you know, obviously, and, uh, just based on the information that we do have, as Mr. Noble alluded to, we're gonna be facing a substantial deficit in, in the overall budget, so I'm certain that we're gonna have some dialogue and some conversations between now and, you know, the final recommendations that go before the town meeting, but, uh, a number of areas are gonna need to be reexamined and, uh, some prioritizing, uh, going forward, but that being said, you know, we've always been very supportive of the school department, the school committee, and, uh, realize that the education of our children is, is a, is a priority in the town, so we'll do our best to accommodate whatever you, you, you feel that your needs are, and going forward, like I say, we'll, uh, we'll be, we'll be in touch, and we'll be having additional conversations.
Sure, we'd be happy to, you know, attend any future meetings to, you know, address any questions that you might have, you might think of something after the fact, or review the materials, and just say, hey, what about this, so, you know, please reach out to us, we'd be more than happy to, um, to address that.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, uh, we need to set the next, the next meeting will be next Wednesday, which is the 13th. Be at the town hall. Do you have anything else, Mr. Noble, before we adjourn?
I'll coordinate with Kathy on what you wanna, and you, if you wanna meet just a few minutes afterwards to decide what you want on the agenda.
Okay.
Because we do need to sort of pick it up.
Okay.
Um, we got the articles that've come in now, so it's time to start hearing some of those at the same time, we need to balance the budget.
Right.
Okay.
That being said, uh, obtain a motion adjourned.
So motion?
Motion may be seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May I adjourn?